It's been a little while since I did this. I think. That if this is, this screen here is unmuted. But mine, which is recording, is muted. I think I get it.
Awesome.
Well, I won't be able to tell them after the video first. I'm sure that he hears. All right, it is. Seven oh three. I saw any, I think I'm locking door. I'm gonna call a regular meeting or the special meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. There's a special meeting. No items can be added to the agenda. First item is, first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Selectmen wants to go with like the leaders.
Republic, we should stand one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and ever.
Okay, all members are here present. Next item is the approval of. Minutes from our October twentieth regular meeting. Everyone's had a chance to review them. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the regular meeting minutes from October twentieth, twenty twenty two.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Call the participation. This is one of two opportunities for members of the public to address the Board of Selectmen. If you are going to do so, please leave your name and address. I'll start with the numbers in the room and then tell anybody online. Is anybody here with us? Yes, sir. Name and address.
Paul Anderson, eighty-nine Main Street, Broadway. Can I have a handout for you? So you can follow along. And just watch the little boy on the words. Thank you. Okay. Okay, so. I want to bring up a subject. I think the town of East Windsor is being bullied by DOT. And I am directly involved in part of that. So I thought I'd bring it to your attention. And if we're gonna make any changes in this, I think the selectmen may have to be involved. Because you represent the town of East Windsor in its entirety. So. I got three items here. That's not the end of the list, but it's enough. So. Back in a number of years ago. In warehouse point, DOT wanted to put a roundabout in to accommodate trucks from Windsor Locks. They really weren't communicating with us. They just wanted to do it. It didn't happen so far. The railroad station's not done. They may be back with that concept at some point. Their idea was, we want to do it, and it doesn't matter what you want. Number two, on Monday, I intended a ZBA meeting. And there's a property on the corner of Mahoney and Scantic. That DOT wanted a variance so they could accommodate changing traffic patterns when they replaced the bridge next summer. The property owners. Testified in that ZBA hearing, they did not want this. They purchased their house in April. With the idea of doing things with the property that. DOT is taking away from them. And they didn't know about that until well after the sale during the summer when they were first approached. They do not want it. ZBA approved it. As part of the approval. The reason for approval was if we don't approve it, DOT will do something else. That property is a non-conforming property. This makes it more non-conforming. My opinion personally is we should have said no, period. But we did not. DBA is within their rights to do what they. Did. I don't know if it's in keeping with ZBA's policies of making the property more non-conforming, however. The reasoning was the issue. DOT was there. It was their proposal, not the property owners. They had no use for this, but they want to do it anyhow, and they got what they wanted. Okay, third item. When they replaced the bridge and Styles Bridge, which shouldn't be called Styles Bridge, but that's another item. They came up with this bright idea that the sewer pipe has to be moved. We explained to them, well, we've had meetings with their engineers, our engineer, it was explained to. Their engineer that that's not necessary, absolutely. And. We don't want that to happen. Now, the original proposal was to put in a new pump station and all kinds of new sewer pipe at the cost of over six million dollars for a sewer pipe. Now it's down to one point seven million dollars of our money. My money, your money, everybody's money. They started this last year. And there has never been a meeting with the WPCA or the, or the WPCF or the engineering staff we hired. In person. They've all been electronic meetings. It appears they may not have any minutes of any of those meetings, so anything that transpired is not on record. I was at a meeting with them on Monday morning. This go around at this meeting, they presented us with information saying that we would have to pay an estimated one hundred thousand dollars for depreciation on this old sewer pipe if it's removed. By statute. It's a valid number. It's a valid calculation. However, it's our belief that the pipe doesn't have to be moved. They can work around it. The, and then there's another. Situation where there is another seventy thousand dollars involved with our overseeing of the sewer pipe project. That. It's a game. We have no idea what the money is. They've been very unclear, but I say it could cost as much as a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And if it did, our ratepayers. In the sewer system would be shoveling up thirty-five bucks apiece. Probably unacceptable. I told DOT, we will not pay, period. So your project is bogus and we're not paying for anything. And every meeting we were told it wouldn't cost anything, wouldn't cost anything, wouldn't cost anything. All of a sudden now it's a big bill. So. Because the meeting on Monday was electronic. And it wasn't working well, and nobody could understand what was going on and total lack of communication. I got up and said, we're having a meeting at DOT at a table. Period. Don't care if you like it or you don't like it. I'm the chairman of the WPCA. I'm the responsible party. I want a meeting at DOT with your engineers, our engineers, blah, blah, blah. We're gonna sit down where we can talk and understand. They agreed. We have a meeting nine o'clock Wednesday morning at DOT in Newington. I'm inviting the selectmen to attend. I call the meeting. You're welcome to attend. There's no obligation for anybody here to attend that meeting. If you wish to, you're welcome. That's all I can say about that because. My job as chairman of the WPCA is to make sure, number one, the sewer system functions properly. And the ratepayers are protected from unreasonable cost. That's what I'm doing. That's my job and I will do it, period. So that's what's going to happen. Our goal is to get them to understand that they don't have to take that sewer pipe out. Of course, by the way. Army Corps of Engineers says if you don't use it, you have to remove it. It's under the river. The cost just escalates and escalates, and that to me is unacceptable. Of course, they're doing the same thing with the Mahoney Road thing. They're escalating their costs by doing what they're doing there. They want to change all the road configurations. Which may be a traffic. System that could be intelligent, but you know what? They could take that bridge, move it farther down the river. Probably for the same amount of money they're gonna waste anyhow and eliminate all this traffic belonging. So there's a big issue there, and all I'm saying is you're more than welcome to attend. And if you can't or don't, it's okay. There's no. No negative connotations to any of that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Senator. I spoke with Mr. Anderson earlier today and kind of briefly on this, and I shared with him, I do have a conflict that I can't move on Wednesday morning, but if anybody else does want to attend, that'd be great. Are there other comments for members of the public here present? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
We can share it. One nineteen Deepo Street. I have some concerns about the safety on Deepo Street. I've been there over forty years and I've watched the population of town grow and so do the people who. Jog and walk down the road. I don't know where they come from, but there's a lot of people on the road. And even this time of the year, when it changed of the light and, and. And the sun in the morning and everything. They're still on the road. Walking down the road is. Where I live, there's a very narrow section where there's the pond, and there's a drop off on the other side of the road. I'm asking for a couple things. Maybe I'm asking the wrong people, but. Glad these officers are here. First of all. Could to be available a street light, maybe where it, where it, where it's narrow? When in that pond, they had a street light in there, maybe? And, okay, that's, that's one thing. The people on the, on the street, somebody's gonna get clipped once. About. I think fifteen years ago, some road digger hit. Right on that hill. A lot of people cross the street near my house to get on the other side of the road because the, the cars can find on their road. I, I. You know, it's like a racetrack. You got a hill on both sides and they. And they. They have to seem to get mostly get up the hill. How they stop or stops, I have no idea. Maybe they glide through, but that, that's, that's one thing, okay? That, that spot there. Another problem I see is. About four thirty every evening. This would be before the time change, I would guess, but about four thirty or so. There's a group of, say. Half a dozen. Maybe eight youngsters on motorcycles and four-wheelers and stuff every single day. And they come back when it's dark. And they come by my house standing on the seats. Fill in the whole road. Doing wheelies. Back on the back wheel, right? And they do this constantly. I think they were down the railroad tracks and head out somewhere down there. I spoke to an officer about it one day. He says, yeah, they, they've seen that. They're, they're aware of it, but how do you catch somebody? They're right in the, in the. In the field, you know? That's another thing. And then. The stop sign on the railroad tracks. When you're coming out of Mill Pond. The guy's already through the stop sign coming out and you can't see him, but you're right on top of. Maybe if that stop sign was right near Mill Pond, just move it down a little bit, that would help. I guess I'm gonna monitor for safety on Deepo Street. And all the way down the end of the street, you stop that, you can take right under it. Okay, but you can't see because there's torches and all kinds of stuff there. Somebody's gonna cut it down like there's torches and there's, and then in the wintertime, they plow the snow right up there. Those are just some of the concerns I see down there. I don't know. My doctor, right people.
Well, the right people are in the room for your, your traffic concerns. Yeah, that I'll talk with the town engineer about. What's that?
You go down there with all the venue, you're aware of.
Every day. But, you know, maybe the LTA can take, the legal traffic authority can take a look at some of the other complaints that you raised. Thank you. Any other comments from members of the public here present? Anybody online wish to address the Board of Selectmen? Okay, seeing done, we'll have another opportunity to do that later in the meeting. Okay. The CIP committee has transmitted their recommendations to us. That's included in the packet, but this will also be included in your budget books when we get to that, that part of the process, but just so you're aware of what they're thinking is. That's Agenda Item Six A. Agenda Item Six B is not actually in your package, but it's just something I want to let you guys know about in terms of upcoming events. You'll remember that last year we commemorated the boat launch at the bottom of Cemetery Road in commem- in honor of Dick Sherman for his many years of work to the American Heritage River Commission. We have a commemorative sign and a plaque that are now in, and we want to do an official unveiling of that. That's gonna be a week from Saturday, the nineteenth, at ten AM, right at that spot. So if, if you guys are available to join for that, it'd be a nice opportunity to just thank Dick for more than twenty years of service to the American Heritage River Commission. We have a new appointment and Mr. Cherry, I'm in receipt of your application, but it'll be on the next one for consideration. We do have a new appointment. Pete Larisse has expressed an interest in serving on the building commission. He's not a stranger. I don't think of anybody, but he's got references. He's got, there is a vacancy to be filled. So I can have a monthly, we'll discuss.
I'll make a motion to appoint Pete Larisse, forty-two, very short, to the Building Committee for a term expiring.
August one, twenty twenty.
August one, twenty twenty. Two, twenty twenty-four.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion?
I'm, I don't have an issue with Mr. Larisse, but I have a question on the paper we were handed here. Where exactly is this located? Because it does need to be updated with the building official.
This is kept in. House clerk's office.
Okay, because I know Rand is no longer our, our building officials.
Any other questions on the nomination? Comments? Made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
I propose. Okay. Yeah. You said, yeah, I'll correct it.
Oh, you corrected it to one twenty-four pages picture.
Okay. What changes here or rather just delays of acting, but on the agenda item eight A, I just want to update folks that that is going to be additionally delayed because the property is now up for tax sale. So that's another issue that needs to be cleaned up before a developer's agreement can be reached. So that's gonna stay as unfinished business or as a. Started business for, for a while. We're on to Agenda Item Eight C. I had hopes to have the. Permit link proposal for development of a land use module back from permit link. So you'll recall, Ruth brought this to us for consideration. It's actually a really cool program, but because of the issues that we had had when we changed off of view permit onto permit link, I had some concerns that I wanted Josh to review. Josh had quite a few concerns about the document and transmitted those with his changes to permit link, who have not finished their, their. Legal review of the change of that. So I'd like to hold Agenda Item Eight C until at least our next meeting. I'm hoping it'll be ready next week. Can I have a motion to postpone Agenda Item Eight C?
I'll move that we postpone Agenda Item Eight C.
There a second? Made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Agenda Item Eight, I would, when I was.
Jason, Jason, this is Peg. I apologize. Who was your second? Okay. Thank you.
Agenda Item Eight D, in light of the vote on the community center this past Tuesday, I'd like to hold. So that we can reformulate some of the recommendations that we had incorporated. This is gonna, this is gonna be coming back and it's gonna be coming back soon, but I want to give you guys a more complete picture. So if I've got a motion to postpone that as well, I'd appreciate it.
I'll move to postpone Agenda Item Eight D, New York Project Recommendation. Second.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Okay, so. This is something I want to just discuss, but I don't, I'm not prepared to take action on it tonight. The state put out a grant opportunity for. Where is it coming from? I think it's ARCA money, the state ARCA money to do HVAC improvements in schools. Which is, I think, a great thing. I'd love to take advantage of it. However, when they issued their. Grant application window, it was September fifteenth, and completed applications needed to be returned to the state by December first, inclusive of the engineered plans for the roofs and the installation, which, I mean, if you're not, if you don't have them on the shelf, you cannot apply. And that's the position that we find ourselves in. I was hoping Dr. Tujan is gonna be here tonight for the other conflict and will be available next week, but. Gold is lapsing back to the town about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars from last year. What I would like is use important of that and repurpose it towards doing the engineering work necessary so that we can apply for this grant the next time it becomes available. And it's a reimbursement grant to the towns, I think, at the same rate the school reconstruction is reimbursed. And this is, this is a really good example of why it's a good government practice to have these plans and studies available for when these opportunities come up. Because they're, they're making an obscene amount of money available for these projects, and there's only gonna be like forty towns in the state that can apply for it, and we're not gonna be one of them. So what I would like to do is start the process towards doing that engineering work so that when the opportunity comes around, which is expected to come around again next year, we could be in a position to take advantage of it then. So that's kind of the overview of that. There's no action necessary tonight. Dr. Tujan will be here next week, but I just want to kind of set the table for what the thought process, why that's an important thing to do. So that's that. Any questions or comments on that?
We go hold them until next week.
All right. Yes, sir.
So no PM stuff tonight?
No, no, we're gonna do the PM stuff, but that's not, that's. Later, see. Okay, first. Ebar. Come on up.
Have a call recording in there or?
Um, that. If you want to share, I can, I can. I'll drive.
So good evening, everyone. The reason we're here. Tonight. Is we have a need to place our body worn. And our in-car cameras. I'll give everybody a copy of presentation that. We're gonna put up and I also have copies of the. From. Axon is a company that we're leaning for. So we did submit this to. But after we submitted it through the CIP process. We were. Had communications with the JAG grant administrator from the state of Connecticut, and they informed us. That, and I'll explain it more deeply in the presentation, that we were eligible for thirty percent reimbursement on the body worn cameras. That we were unaware of. So. That was some other factors brought us here tonight. So if we go towards it, I think it's fair for to bring everybody up to where we are and why we're here tonight. First of all, the reason we're here tonight and the reason I, I'm here today is because the body worn cameras that are required by the Public Act. Twenty dash one and the dashboard cameras that are required by Public Act twenty dash one are watch guard body and watch guard in car dashboard cameras, if you can advance it. Thank you. We've purchased some of our dashboard cameras back twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. So some of those cameras are getting quite old. Rolling up on eight years old. We, at that time is when we built the infrastructure for our dashboard cameras, which includes a wireless adapter. So when the police cars pull into the parking lot, the video automatically downloads, so nobody has to do anything. It downloads to the server. The server is now eight years old because it was purchased during that original purchase back in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. In anticipation of the Public Act, we moved and purchased in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, six more. Dashboard cameras for our patrol cars, because we have eleven frontline patrol cars. So all of our patrol cars by the public that are required, the marked cars are required to have a dashboard carriage. And we were able to, we found out that Branford Police Department here in Connecticut were switching to a different camera, and they donated forty plus of these. Watch guard cameras, which would work with our watch guard cameras that we had in the patrol cars. And the way it works is these actually become the microphone. And we had to pay for a little bit of equipment to make it work, but for a very small amount of money, we made these donated cameras work for nearly three years now. Our problem is. We, we do pay a little bit, twenty-one thousand dollars a year for warranty and the licensing to operate these body warrants and the in-car cameras. The, these particular cameras I'm pointing at are called a Vista Body Worn Cameras. They are currently end of life. They do not make these cameras anymore. But Watch Guard, which is a really good product, was sold to Motorola. And if anybody knows anything about radios, Motorola is a gold standard in radios, so that means the price of these cameras replacement just went up. And the problem is that the new V three hundred body worn camera is cloud based. And no longer uses a server. So. Even if we could get the cameras from Watch Guard and piece it together with our current in-car. It, there's a conflict in our, our system. It just won't work. So. That's where we are today. Approximately a hundred and so we, we know that Axon is formerly Taser. They changed their name to Axon. They got into camera business. And they're doing a really good job with it, frankly. Later in the presentation, I'll show you an example video and the, and the quality is really, really good. And their pricing is better than Motorola. And I'll touch on that a little bit later. Currently, a hundred and two Connecticut agencies are using the Axon body cameras and in-car cameras, including, and this is the most important piece. The judicial districts. Currently with our watch guard system, when the court wants a copy of a video, we have to have somebody download that to a disk or a thumb drive and then get that to the court. Now, with the, the new system that we're proposing, which is out of state bid, by the way. We can just give them permission to view that. In the clock. And now there's no, it's gonna save us time, the personnel having to download, which usually takes about an hour, hour and a half from the download some of these big videos. We did comparative pricing with Axon and Motorola project, apples to apples. Axon was about seven thousand dollars more a year over a fucker, over a five-year plan.
What? Axon was less.
Axon Motorola was more.
Yeah, there you go.
We do have a tested evaluation Axon camera out. In the field right now being operated by two separate officers. In the field right now being operated by two separate officers. Again, that's where I got the video that I'm going to show you a little bit later. Uh, it's, it comparatively at night, it's much better than the watch guard. Now, these watch guard cameras, the technology in, in these, this particular cameras is over five years old. So understand that. And we're getting positive feedback from the field. Uh, the accent of product also has something. For the, for a lesser price than a Motorola product, which is called computer aided dispatch interface. So when I'm out in the field and I'm, I, I'm recording a particular interaction with the public. After I get done, I have to put on my reading glasses and look on this thing and I have to toggle through and find which. Tag to tag it, so the computer knows whether to delete it after a period of time or save it. So there's like five different choices here. With this module, when dispatch clears the call, when you call it over the radio, say I'm clear from that call, domestic dispute. Boom, it's tagged, it automatically communicates with the camera and tags all the evidence. As such, and nobody has to toggle through it, it's done. And that is also going to save times because currently we have a lieutenant. Who has to go through the videos manually and ensure that each one of those are tagged properly. And so that we're going to have a time savings there as well. So the future of the camera project. Like you said, we put it through CIP, but if we. Advance this, I'm going to show you, there's going to be potential savings right off the bat, probably sixteen thousand dollars. But it could be even higher than that. Um. So if it's approved, we could probably get the body worn cameras. On the street before April of next year. And hopefully in the cars, the in car cameras are a little more complex and with ships. And everything that we're having a hard time getting home, electronics. Worldwide, they're on a little bit of a delay, hopefully by July. But the good news is the grant that I talked about earlier. We need to have these body worn cameras purchased before June. Of twenty twenty three in order to get the grant. So that's a key date that we have to work on. If not approved, we have to make these old technology body, uh, body worn cameras last. Until CIP is approved or until we get money in other locations. We have to have them. We currently eleven of these particular. What, uh, Vista cameras are out waiting to be repaired and they're having a difficult time getting the parts to fix them. So fortunately, we had forty pounds of them, so we had some extras, but we're running low on them. And in fact. Yesterday morning. Deputy Chief was, yesterday morning, the server crashed. And we finally had to work on getting it up and running because it's an eight year old server, but we did get it up and running. So there are some issues also. Axon has told me that if we do not move on this. By twelve thirty one, twenty twenty two, that they expect that there's going to be a five to seven percent increase in the cost. That the body worn and in car cameras. So, and then we'll have to probably replace that aging server that I just talked about crashed. Uh, and somebody may be thinking, well, why don't you just move the server onto the, uh, main server? At the police department. Well, the problem with that is we're already running into storage issues with that particular server. And there's not enough room to hold all the video. So going to the cloud is really the best way to do it. Um, the JAG grant. We are not eligible for the dashboard cameras with the JAG grant. Because we purchased them back in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. If you already have them, you already bought them, no brand. But the body warrants, good news. We invite, they were donated. And Jack, the Jack Grant Administrator says, that's a loophole. We're going to get you thirty percent of the first year. Uh, hardware and software costs of just the body boards, not the in car. So. We're then to the next slide. This is the original proposal from. First year for the body worn cameras would be fifty four, almost fifty five thousand. The dashboard cameras fifty eight for a total of one thirteen, two sixteen, forty nine. That's for the first year and then moving on, it would be roughly thirty one nine, thirty two thousand dollars a year for the software. We already budgeted twenty one thousand of that. So that was our first proposal and that was the one that I, uh, the reason I have this slide up. Is because I didn't know who was going to be here tonight and I tried to be as transparent as possible and this is what I presented to the CIP. Okay, so I want everybody to understand, this was the originally what I submitted. The next slide, if you've been, uh, take us to it. This slide, we had a meeting with the finance director and we all decided that we'd probably invest a front load. The first year as much as possible to get the payments over the next four years of the project life. A little bit less, but also to pay for most important thing, the warranty up in, in advance. So all the equipment is fully warranted. So this is a plan moving forward that I'm here to present to you today. And that plan is, would increase that one thirteen to one thirty two, uh, nine. Uh, nine, six, seven, three, up in the upper right hand corner. In the total five year cost, it's down in the bottom quarter of. Uh. Two hundred and forty one thousand dollars. That number is always going to save pretty much the same. Because we're just moving the cost from one column to another.
And is it fair to say that, that, um, if the, if your request for the transfer were to go through, this constitutes year one? Or is it FY, uh, twenty three, twenty four?
It would start as soon as we sign and started receiving the product, that would be the year. So, but fortunately this year, we have to budget for that whole software package, not. The, not the abbreviated one. If we were do, doing, that's why you see IP, I only ask for seventy seven thousand. Cause I planned on budgeting the other part through IT. But if you add the seventy seven thousand and, and the IT piece together, then you get that, that one thirteen number that I originally. If I'm confusing anybody, just let me know. So we go to the next slide. This slide kind of explains a little bit better. So the first year hardware and five years of warranty. For the cameras, uh, the body worn cameras forty two thousand. The dashboard cameras fifty four thousand, six, seven, seven roughly for a total of nine, nine, there's almost ninety seven thousand. The software then is another thirty six thousand for, brings that one thirteen over that I originally talked to. Up. Paying for the warranty the first year up to one thirty two. But there's where the JAG grant comes in, that thirty percent. That we're going to get back reimbursed from. State of Connecticut through federal funding. Uh, the sixteen thousand four ninety is a rough estimate. The grant administrator told us, we have, once we receive. The invoice from Axon, she'll go through it line by line and credit us everything that she thinks we're, we're, uh, entitled to. And, uh, we've worked with her on other grants and she's phenomenal, so she'll do the right thing for us. And also, uh, we discussed this with IT. And Entree is our current IT provider and we figured we should have a little bit of money. Worked into it in case we run into with some snafu with the programming. And we have to call Entree in, so I budgeted an extra thirty two fifty in that as well in this budget. So the end number that I'm here today to ask for you to consider, um, transferring to. Um, whatever line the finance director sees fit. Is one nineteen, seven, fifty six, seventy three. And if I, if this is done and passes before you, the board, the next step would be to go to the board of finance. And if the money is transferred, we could sign the contract with them December first. And get this project will be. Next slide, please.
No, yeah, thanks. I, I had to put that in there, just, oh, I didn't say.
Um, this is a breakdown of the total five year. And this is an example of a video, if I can take a look. We didn't click it, right? Just, yeah, just click. Takes a second for the audio to come on. It, it doesn't kick on until it gets out of the car. There's, the way these cameras work, there's like a. There's a minute delay before the audio comes on, so if I started this recording right now. It actually, when it's on, is passively recording it. It goes back a full minute. And so that's why you're hitting it.
Shouldn't it go away now?
It will. Oh, yeah, it should have. Maybe something with the sound. Your. Speakers.
It should still be playing up there.
Yeah, it certainly should have. I can cheat. Again, he, he, maybe he shut it off. Then he had to start it up, so. So if approved. By the board of select and the board of finance, that's seventy seven thousand dollars. Which I had a little cool thing, it disappeared and it's all right. Is, is that the thing? No, if you go back, you know, then. Wasn't that cool? There it goes, and it disappears. Disappeared from the CIP and, uh. And, uh, we can use that money as a town to do something else or book or, or they have some other CIP projects. So that's my presentation. I would answer any questions that anybody has, um. I wouldn't be before you tonight if I didn't think it was a good idea. I think the five to seven percent possible increase. Of that hundred and thirteen thousand dollars that we were doing, talking about is a substantial amount of money, not to mention. The sixteen thousand and five hundred dollars of the grant reimbursement. If you add it all together, we're talking about a thirty thousand dollar savings to the town on this project if we move on it.
Questions or comments?
I guess I like the new system better because we don't have to worry about servers and budgets and, and maintenance and. Although I don't think it's overall any cheaper, it's just less headache.
Yeah, in fact, it's a, it's a tad more expensive because the, we're currently paid twenty one thousand dollars. It's going to go up to around twenty seven thousand dollars, but that'll be in our, uh, IT operating budget. That we'll have to plan moving forward.
And we're unconcerned with the data from cloud base, as far as the complete, the police department is concerned because. That's covered by some other retention law that. Isn't our problem.
Yeah, we would set up again with the retention side of it, just the way we do with our server. We set up. Our, how we want to, uh, save things and how we want to retain them. I control the rights to our server now and we would control the rights to our cloud based server as well. So if you want to keep, say the statute says you gotta, uh, you have to. Save a particular incident for ninety days. I usually like to save it a little bit longer, just in case. Usually, sometimes it takes people. You know, some time to, to develop the courage to make a complaint against an officer. So I want to always have that in, in there so I can go back and review the video.
So, so you and I spoke about this, uh, actually twice prior to this, and I guess just in the course of a conversation, this. Hadn't occurred to me before. Um, is this? So is it asset forfeiture that you have funds in?
We do have some asset forfeiture money.
Is that allowable for something like this? Is that equipment bait? I can't remember the difference between the private duty stuff and the asset.
We, we could use some of that for this because it's usually money that is put forth to combat drugs. If it's, if it was obtained through narcotics, the DEA is where we've been getting a lot of money. I can't tell you what the number is right now. I haven't looked at it in a while. Um. But yeah, we could use some of the funds for that if it was necessary.
But you don't know how much is in there.
I also have copies of the. The actual pricing, if you guys are interested in that as well. So this one is.
Thank you. Let's have you go to town meeting.
No, transfers.
Just to transfer.
If it's an added appropriation as the board attending, it's transferred to the board of finance.
And this is not an added appropriation, we're just moving it from.
Amy's recommendation is to transfer the funds, uh, from debt service to, uh, CNR police equipment. These are for the dash, given the first one was body worn. I, I would not be excited about doing that appropriation. Well, I mean, you gotta go, and it, it is a law. Their equipment does suck right now and it's on the way out. I mean, it, it doesn't need to be replaced. It's just a question of like. How do you fund it? Now, we could also. Let it ride and try and do it through the, uh, CIP budget. This was, I believe, the top ranked project in CIP last year. For, for this coming with that. Um, but. It'd be, it would be great to give us some breathing room. In that budget because there, you know, if you read the memo from, from Adam. Um, they had like seven and a half million dollars requests, one point nine million rec, of recommendations and you know they're not going to get more than.
Say it's down from twelve, right? Wasn't it twelve last year?
I have no idea. It would, it's something probably each dollar.
The grand total was twelve, if you look at all. Future years too, so, yeah. But, uh, just to clarify, you're correct, this, it, they've come out to the number one project for our ranking, so.
And with your, you know, if you take, um, your one point nine million dollars worth of recommended, recommended projects and remove. A hundred and roughly a hundred and thirty, um, that this would be, I mean, that's. Five percent of your total ass.
It was just the seventy seven that he mentioned that.
Well, all right, two and a half percent of your total ass.
Every little bit else, so.
Yes, I. Just wait, Adam.
I mean, it's not like it's not going to get done. Might as well take advantage of the, any. Savings we can get, wait. Don't get that.
I think we should do it now. This, the vote is only good until the thirty first and going to go up, I think, saving the town. The thirty thousand by acting now is smart.
Do you have a, uh? Rough back of the envelope with what the asset forfeiture balance is? I honestly couldn't say. If I would, I'm really, I just haven't checked it in, in a while. I know we had some recent deposits. I don't think it's that, they were small. Yeah, they were like four thousand hours. I would, I would venture to say it's less than that.
Is that on, definitely on your writing annual statements, there's part of the police commission package?
Yeah. That's, it's in a different section. Yeah. Yeah, there's two, there's federal and there's state. The federal is higher because of our embedded person in the DEA. And, but again, there's a lot of money that may trickle down. And but again, there's a lot of money that may trickle down eventually. We see it when we go into the asset forfeiture pro portal. But those are, all those monies are split up between all the departments that put an embedded officer in to work with the DEA, so.
And it's it's slow coming.
It varies. Has to be processed. The the case has to go all the way through the court before the court can say that. It the asset forfeitures can be dispersed.
That's two or three years in a good year and then you're not hoping it's longer. All right, well, what do you guys think? Any other questions for the chief?
By moving it on to the board of finance.
Want to make a booking?
Sure, so I'm I'm sending, it would be the one nineteen seven, no, it would be the ninety six eight nine five six eight number. Or.
It would be the one nineteen.
The one nineteen seven. Okay, so I'll move to send to the Board of Finance for consideration a transfer for the. East Windsor Police Department body dash cameras. In the amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand seven hundred and fifty six dollars and seventy three cents.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Where are we now? So we put out, as you guys will recall, we put, we transferred the money to. Appropriated the money to do the engineering work on the high school roof for its replacements. The project was put out to bid. The bid responses are included in your packet. Here, everybody has had a chance to review them. I'm familiar with two of the three names, but Mr. Sauer, do you want to explain the pros and cons of these? And if you have a recommendation, I'd ask for that.
So as our selectmen buzzer explained. We put out a for PM, we need to hire a PM, a project manager, someone to do all the. Paperwork for us through crack for the reimbursements, not. To run the day to day project, that would be the responsibility of. Public works. I also went through them thoroughly and I recommend going with CG. CSG. They're the company we used in the past. They have a great reputation. They are the most economical. They also currently working. They they do a lot of roofs. They do a lot of school roof projects and. The segue into the HVAC end of it because this bid went out for both of those projects. The roof and the HVAC. They're currently working on. For that grant that's due, it's the HVAC grant money that's due on December first. They're working with Farmington, Oxford. Bedford and Norwalk. They all had. Stuff started, you know, and they they had similar, I believe, Farmington. Had it ready to go because they were going with it. They were going back and forth trying to figure out the funding. But they're working on it right now with them to be ready by December first, so. They're they'll be very familiar with it if that grant comes back. And like I said, they did the middle school roof with us. They're the ones that came in. When I came in and helped us clean up and do the modulars, they're a great company. And they are the most economical and and they know how we work. And I certainly know how they work. So that would be my recommendation.
Have you worked with either of the other two?
No.
So the only.
A lot of them really disqualifies themselves because he. They're, but is it colleagues or?
Colliers.
Colliers. They're the the job like they're doing engineering and everything and that's one thing. With the reimbursable grant with the school is it can't be the same firm. It has to be a different firm, so they're.
Qualified for the state reimbursement.
Yes. And this is the first step. So we get. Fully compensated with the sixty eight.
I think it's fifty percent.
Fifty eight, yeah.
So as you guys are all aware, the Board of Education is is spending mid five figures a year. Just patching holes on the on the high school roof, which is in in bad disrepair. The first step to. Putting together an application to replace that is onboarding of these folks. So I was familiar with CSG because of their work in town before and also colliers. For colliers. Am I right in saying they're the one that are like eye poppingly more expensive?
Yes, yeah, and I believe it's. It includes the engineering work. For the roof.
Questions or comments?
And. With the high school roof. This also includes getting the engineering for the elementary school too. Because that's about three years up. Also, it needs to be replaced.
So it would be the engineering on the elementary school and the high school as well as the PM for.
No, well. Yeah, if you approve the HVACs, if you're gonna talk about it next week and appropriate the money, they'll do the PM for that too. So basically they'll help us with all the bid documents, do all the state work. Have us get an RFQ for an architect. And go that whole process. I mean, that's how we did the. In two thousand seventeen, we did the middle school roof. And, you know, we streamlined that whole thing. We we started it. Everything was on schedule. We were done. Paperwork was filed. It's a little bit of extras that. Were reimbursable, but it was the steel decking that routed out. So.
Of that roof being long overdue.
Right. I, you know, I don't know where we're gonna be with the high school, but we will do a thorough investigation and make sure that, you know. We know before we go out to bid. It won't, there shouldn't be any surprises.
And I I gotta admit, although I read through their proposal, I don't know. Construction advocacy professionals at all. Any questions or comments for Joe? Do we want to pick zip?
For the HVAC engineering on school building.
Any discussion, comments?
Authorizing the first select.
First looking to sign. Forty one.
And then my second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post?
You were the team manager, Greg.
Yeah. Try to let me, okay, so. This is a, correct me if I'm wrong, this is an annual application that we need to do. It is, this is a couple of years in the rear still. That we're chasing the money for, right?
That one I think is twenty two.
Right.
It it has the date, so the.
December one, twenty twenty two. So one of the requirements, so Chief Art has long ago expressed his intention to step down as. Emergency management, but. In order to qualify for the EMPG grants, you need to have somebody who's in that role who has taken all six of the courses. That are required to FEMA in order to get the reimbursement, which comes out to be about seven thousand dollars for the town. I have taken ten of them, but I have not taken all sixteen of them.
What's the holdup?
One of them required you guys to send me to Puerto Rico, which I thought was kind of a nonstarter, so I'm just not gonna do that. New Orleans or something. Those are the two choices. You're not gonna do that. However, if we could use Chief Art's name on the application, that would make sure that we're continuing to be eligible. And we're not gonna replace him in that role before December first anyway. So the deadline is due December first, so I just need authorization to submit this paperwork with the. Chief's name as the applicant so that we can continue to be eligible for the reimbursement.
Make a motion to allow the first selectman to sign the emergency management performance grant with the. Deputy Chief, inter deputy chiefs. Name as the emergency management coordinator.
Second, right? Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go to school fashion on my computer.
When you were doing that, I asked you for questions.
Sure.
Building committee, how how many years is that term?
How many years?
Have I balanced?
No, what is the, never years at a time.
Four year.
It isn't, okay. Wanted to make sure. I found I abandoned to twenty twenty eight.
Yeah, you said twenty twelve.
Well, because I was waiting for somebody to give me the right number.
I'm gonna ask that we postpone, or actually that we table agenda item nine E until after executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We need to do that. We need, I need to talk to you guys about a negotiation point and then we'll do something in the open session. So votes out, all all in favor?
Aye.
Can I just step back with my own computer? We just. And agreed.
This is your agenda packet from last one. Very last name. You're on the, you're on the wrong agenda.
I did wonder, just because I'm using.
So we're never gonna. All, so once again, all in favor. Aye, opposed. Okay, we're gonna come back to nine. E, I'd ask that we post, that we table agenda item nine F until after executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? So we're on to nine G, which is the the job description for the emergency management director. So this is something that by statute, the appointing authority is the chief executive of the town, so. I don't actually. I would like you guys to opine on this election so that this is a collaborative and a team effort. I don't want to make the call myself. So Chief Hart graciously provided us a a sample of the job description that's currently used. I will tell you again, after taking ten of those sixteen FEMA courses, much of this is pulled verbatim from some of the courses that. FEMA requires to be taught, which I would have known before sitting through something like forty three hours of those classes. But. I just wanted to make sure you guys were comfortable with the job description before we posted that. Any questions or comments? Does that happen here?
Yes, and the touchscreen.
Okay, so this is the job description that I want to post. And then once, once it's posted, we get applicants, I'll bring them back to the board for probably interviews, interview purposes. Sound good? All right. Tax refunds.
I'll move to approve the tax refunds totaling three hundred and ninety one dollars and sixty nine cents.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posted. All right, it's like the reports. First and foremost, the long election season is behind us and we know, we now know who will be represented in the next two years. I want to especially offer my most sincere congratulations to Senator Sauganwar, Representative Jamie Foster, and Representative Carol Hall. All of whom have represented us for the last two years, all of whom we know well. And all of whom will continue to represent us for the next two. I'm I'm really glad to have that team continuing to advocate in the best interest of East Windsor. In Hartford, so congratulations to them. In a race that saw more than four thousand votes cast, the question of proving the town can move forward through local bonds. On a community center proposal looks to have failed by a margin of twenty votes. Hundred, one thousand nine hundred and sixty eight in favor to one thousand nine hundred and eighty eight opposed. The narrow margin will trigger a statutory mandated recount that will take place next week. On October twenty fifth, Congressman Larson spent much of the day in East Windsor, visiting the senior center to discuss his. Social Security twenty one hundred legislative proposal and then to meet with local businesses and nonprofit leaders. Who've been recipients of the town's race grant. Last year, which was intended to help bolster our local economy against the worst effects of the pandemic. Attendees shared their stories about the hardships they incurred due to COVID, as well as how the funds were used to prevent their businesses from closing down. It was a wonderful opportunity to share our local successes with the congressman. On the twenty seventh, town held their annual haunted highway for youth in East Windsor. This is always a really fun night, both for the kids. Who come through and for the participants who keep upping their Halloween game each year. This year, the town hall staff was voted as best boot with our version of the Wizard of Oz. Thanks to all the groups who participated in the night's events. And I I will throw a bone to the police union who always show up well. And this year they showed up as the circus, including with a gentleman who spent two months. An hour a night learning how to walk on stilts so that he could be a police officer walking around dressed on stilts. It was cool. And it's a really great representation of how everybody who participates tries to up their game the next year so that it's fun for people who are giving out the candy. As well as for the people who are giving it. It is, it is a blast. On November first and second, I attended the CCM convention with town department heads and with deputy first selectman. For the debate later that night, Sarah and Charlie came down and joined as well. These are always really great opportunities to. Exchange ideas and to network with municipal leaders from from municipalities across the state. In fact, I think we were sitting mostly with a group of leaders from southeastern Connecticut and it was. Really kind of cool to steal some of their ideas and and let them know about some of the things that we have going on here. I like to say that it's always worth getting a cup of coffee at a convention like that because you never know at the coffee station. Where the best ideas are gonna come from and how you can adapt them, so. It was a really good convention. On the fifth, the Veterans Committee hosted their annual road race, which drew more than two hundred participants. Congratulations to them on another very successful year. And then again, coming up on November ninth, ten AM, we will be holding a small ceremony. To formally commemorate the Richard Sherman Park at the intersection of Cemetery Road and Amelia. All are certainly welcome to attend. That's all I have. Great.
Yeah, mine's gonna be very short. I had two liaison meetings, one leading the police department. Which the item that was on the agenda besides the financial was discussed elaborately by. Our acting chief, so I won't go into that. And then the other, the money of planning zoning. our acting chief, so, um, I won't go into that. And then the other, um, the money of planning and zoning, um, meeting that was alluded to by Mr. Anderson, um, so there's an assumption we we covering anything that took place there, so.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, uh, November eighth, I attended the arts and culture com- committee meeting. The committee received ten entries to their logo contest and decided on a winner. The winning entry was created by Kelly Boullet and will be the future face of the arts and culture committee and will be attached to future projects. And it is posted on their Facebook page now. If anyone would like to see it, um, it's really simple and clean with a light bulb in the middle, um, showing that the committee has lots of ideas. Uh, congratulations to Kelly. An update was given on the many projects that are in progress. Um, committee member Russell Williams has begun standing sixty boards for the senior graduation project. And there is a chainsaw artist that has received the a log that will be revealed at the New Year's Day hike. The fence project in collaboration with the Booster Club and High School has come in a little higher than what was budgeted, so a few small changes will occur to keep the cost down, but the project will still move forward. The committee is in need of additional rocks for the River Rock Garden at the elementary school. Please contact Chairman Debbie Williams at E W Arts and Culture at gmail dot com. If you have any that you'd like to donate. A few future projects include the painting of a plow at the Department of Public Works and a mural on the kickboard at Osborne Field. The Bob Moss Arts and Culture Scarecrow placed fourth in the scarecrow contest that was displayed here outside of Town Hall. The group had fun participating and hopes that it brought some awareness to their committee. Uh, the chairman Debbie Williams reported she was notified that the committee has been awarded a one thousand dollar grant from the Connecticut Office of the Arts. Last night's Board of Education meeting was canceled. Um, and then a few upcoming events, the East Windsor Police Union and East Windsor Social Services will be hosting their annual stuff a cruiser at Walmart on Saturday, November twenty-sixth from eight A M. To four P M. The collection is for new unwrapped toys for families in need this holiday season. And, um, East Windsor Parks and Recreation and the Community Services Departments are working with the five-corner cupboard and are in need of twenty-five dollar grocery gift cards to accompany turkeys this year. The deadline is November fifteenth. And East Windsor Parks and Rec is also compiling a holiday dessert recipe booklet. Please submit your favorite cake, cookie, pie, or goodie recipe to D. Williams at east winds or C T dot com by November thirtieth to be included in the booklet. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Really. Well, okay, on October twenty-fourth, I attended the East Windsor B M X Skate Park Committee meeting. Um, during that meeting, they discussed, um, that the sign in front of their park had been taken apart and cleaned and we're looking to replace it, but they decided to try just cleaning it and that, um, improved it greatly, so they're gonna just keep the sign they have. Um, they also are looking to purchase and present a park bench in memory of Tom, um, Tom and Edis and, um, positive sponsors to help with funding on that bench. On November fifth, they were going to be drawing the winner of the B M X bike and skateboard at, um, Bat tracks and at their next meeting, I find out who those winners were.
I can tell you.
Oh, you're good?
The skateboard went to Lori Standish.
Okay.
And the bike went to septicology. Remember their names.
Oh, oh, no, okay, great. Um, and let's see, um, so far they've raised over two hundred and forty dollars from their bottle and can drive that they still have ongoing. Um, they raised a hundred and ninety-five dollars from selling hot dogs at and sodas at the Glazer sidewalk sale in September. And they discussed some other fundraising ideas, but nothing that they haven't put in stone yet. On October twenty-seventh, I participated in the Parks and Rec Haunted Highway, like Jason already mentioned, um, with the P T O. Uh, we went with the theme of a nightmare before Christmas. Uh, we had a great time and the turnout was excellent. Um, and although the P T O didn't win this event, I did use my costume to win a contest to problem solve brewing.
Okay, so your costume.
And to go trick-or-treating with the family and we stopped at the haunted host company in Roast Point where they were giving out candies. So that was fun.
Your costume was both really creepy and really, really.
Thank you. Um, the Roast Point Sidewalk, uh, reconstruction project has been underway for a couple of weeks now and looks to be almost near completion. We've done a really good job with that and, um, and it has been a little bit of a traffic issue, but it's, it looks really nice and it looks like they're almost done, so it's come along well. You should be thankful or happy about that. Very happy. I drive by it and I that's very satisfied.
Yeah, it looks very nice compared to what was there. And that's it. That's all I have. All right, thank you.
I have a short, uh, report. The the only meeting I was able to make since our last one was the planning and zoning, which, um, the two ninety-seven North Road, the the soil management facility, the applicant withdrew their application. They were on the last night anyway and wasn't looking good, so they 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 need to go back and and fix theirs, their issues, their compliance issues, and then they are, they'll be able to come at it again in the near future. Um, the public hearing for the farm workers for a hundred whopping road was continued without by the applicant's request without any discussion, so that'll kind of get kicked into gear on the twenty-fourth. On the what was the other thing? Hold on. It was, you really didn't have a lot. There was the Abbey Road, the community center site plan was approved, modifications, minor modifications. Um, so that's in the hopper for some future data, I guess. And then they approved, uh, the road acceptance for Farms Road, which would be coming to us, um, soon, I guess, to, you know, to officially become the town. That's it.
All right. All participation is the public's second opportunity to address members of the Board of Selectmen. Again, I'll first start with anybody who's here in the room and then turn anybody who's with us online. If anybody in the room who would like to address the board. So please state your name and address. Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Um, Buckley, Kings Court. Just a curious question. Who all didn't show best week? Let me.
There there were two members who had conflicts that were personal in nature, and I'll just leave it at that.
You need three to have a consortium?
We have three, but because of the, uh, some of the projects that were under consideration at their request, I opted to move the meeting.
Okay. It's curious. Okay.
And I was gonna be late anyway, so.
So there you go. She wasn't one of them.
Just value it and then to share with their personal. I had to for name, but.
So there were two in the conflict. One of them was not Marie. Any other, uh, questions or comments? It's like, yeah, guess who now? Okay, uh, anybody online who would like to address the Board of Selectmen, please unmute yourself, tell your, tell us your name and your address and state your business.
I had Jason in Snoring Farmer, two forty-seven South Water Street. Um, I actually just wanted to, um, express to the Board of Selectmen as a whole that, um, I appreciate the efforts that you put forth for the town of East Windsor. Um, you know, with the thing at Abbey Road and things that I've been seeing on Facebook and whatnot, um, and you guys are in a really difficult position because you're actually a five-member board who are responsible for running a forty million-dollar-a-year business. Um, your portion is not all of that. Part of it is Board of Education, but, um, I I just don't want you to get, um, I guess, disenchanted with things. I think what you've been doing has been moving forward a lot of things that this town needs. I think the five of you with Jason leading it as the person who runs the town on a day-to-day basis have been doing things in as transparent a manner as you can. I don't believe that anybody should be expecting for everything that happens in this town and in a forty-million-dollar-a-year business to be public knowledge at every given moment. Um, I think you all work well together. And, um, I just want you to know that I appreciate what you do and I hope that you continue to strive as board as a whole for the betterment of this community, um, because I think we're making great strides with you and I just want you to know you're appreciated.
That's very nice. Thank you, ma'am. And I would echo your comments in in terms of the unity amongst the board members. I've expressed to each of them how much I appreciate that we leave politics at the door and do what we think is best for the town. So thank you for those comments. Anybody else who would like to address the Board of Selectmen? Seeing then we will have an executive session and there will be action to follow. Can I have a motion to go into executive session to include just the five of us?
Will we go into executive session, including just the Board of Selectmen?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're in executive session at eight twenty-two P M. Uh, it's nine eighteen. We're out of executive session. Um, the items that we have left to take up, um, first is gonna be agenda item nine E. Um, review and approve the interim contract for the acting deputy chief police. Um, there is a draft in front of you. Is there a motion?
Yes, uh, I moved to approve the employment agreement for the interim deputy chief of police and authorize the signature of the first selectman.
Is there a second?
Second.
May I consent to any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here's the numbers. Uh, last item is nine F. Uh, can I have a motion?
I moved to postpone agenda item nine F until our next meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, no further business coming before the Board of Selectmen. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move that we adjourn the special meeting of the Board of Selectmen at nine nineteen.
There a second?
Aye.
Moved consecutive. It's not debatable. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at nine nineteen P M.